Welcome to B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher along with B News producer Sydney Bowles, B News reporters Tad Stefanak and Robert Paris, Anthony Matos with sports, Peter Brown with the weather, and Gretchen Carey with the community calendar. And making his directorial debut today is Carter Ames. Thank you for joining us. We start a town meeting, the first of three in 2024, where elected representatives from Burlington's seven precincts cast votes against two potential developments in town. In the first, the body voted to voice its opposition to a proposed senior housing development near Overlook Park in Windmere. It's a non-binding vote, and the state and the Burlington zoning Board of Appeals still can approve the project. In the second vote, Town Meeting nixed a plan for expansion from Herb Chambers Kia dealership. Those who supported the project said it was a way to help an upstanding corporate citizen of Burlington. Here's Doug Davidson, a Town Meeting member and vice-chair of the Ways and Means Committee.
From my standpoint, we spend so much of our time looking at the budget and what it is we need to do and what we need to be thinking about. We have major capital projects on the way. We also have major pressure from increases in cost in trash pickup and construction materials. And certainly, people want raises every year. So the pressure on the budget has never been greater. And this is, certainly, we need to consider the tax revenue side of this. We also need to consider just what message we're sending to the greater business community about how we are as a community to work with. So there was a time that we could just be Burlington, and we could lay down the law and say, well, if you want to be here, these are the things you have to do. There are a lot of communities around us who have awakened and decided that it's pretty nice to have 60% of their budget paid for by the commercial properties. And so they're competing now. And we need to continue to take care of our reputation.
But residents who lived near the Cambridge Street dealership said it could have disrupted their quiet neighborhood and increased traffic. Sharon Laurie led the charge.
All of these people aren't here because we dislike Herb Chambers. We think they're great. We think Herb Chambers donated to the community. That's great. So did we. And when I personally bought my home, I bought my home to retire because our homes are nestled in the woods. And I didn't want all this craziness around me. I have four kids, okay? So I want to just peace and quiet. And that's what I have today. And that's what they're trying to take away.
The vote was incredibly close, and for the first time in years, Town Meeting demanded a roll call vote for accuracy. Here's how it went.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. It's two-thirds. Raise them high. All those opposed?
Both opposed.
The question has been moved. It's been asked, it's been voted on, it's been asked for a roll call vote. So we will go through it, one Town Meeting member at a time, and they will tell us how they're voting. We'll start with Precinct One, Mimi Bix Highland. There being 64 in favor, or 65 in favor, 34 in favor, 35 opposed, the motion fails.
Despite that vote, the motion failed because it required a two-thirds vote for zoning change. Town Meeting also approved online cash transfers and decided not to create its subcommittee to look into electronic voting. Those driving around town last weekend may have noticed some protesters out in the coal. That was members of the new group Burlington for Palestine. Timmy Sullivan, a spokesperson for the group, said their goal was to raise awareness about lives lost in the Israeli Hamas war. The Planning Board has requested to be more involved in the effort to rebuild the Foxhill Elementary School. In its January 18 meeting, members questioned the decision to build a school for 325 students, which was a number created by calculations from the Mass School Building Authority. Here's Planning Board Chair Barbara LaRue, speaking with BPS Director of Operations Bob Kuna.
I think what you're hearing is our concern that we may, we the town, may be building a school that upon its opening will be too small for the students it's supposed to serve. And I'd like to know if there's a plan for that. And this is probably not a question for the consultant, but rather for the school committee, but they're not here.
Right. Yeah, again, since we're not finalized, we're not that far into the phase, I think it's really a conversation for the school building committee and the school committee, you know, further on into the process. Because there's-
But you've chosen this path, the 325-student school. And that's the path we're going down, right? So it's sort of like it's time to discuss.
Kuna went on to say that the new school will be bigger than the current one, and with redistricting, projected enrollment changes, and a better use of space, they don't believe the new school will be too small. To address their concerns, the Planning Board voted to create a new subcommittee that includes their own members, Planning Board staffers, and members of the school committee and school staff. It is fair to say that the Planning Board has little authority in school matters. January Town Meeting may have just finished, but town leaders are already preparing for the next town meeting in May. The schools typically get to ask for about $2 million in capital projects, Committee Chair Martha Simon said. So they've begun a 17-item list of items that principals have requested. That includes items like a new generator at Francis Wyman, bench repair at Pine Glen, upgrades to the bathrooms at Marshall Simons, new carpets and new boiler tubes at the high school. No dollar amounts were available for the projects at this time. School committee members debated how much time to invest, how much to invest in schools like Foxhill and the high school, which may be due for bigger demolition projects or redesigns in the coming years. Though who has been following the story of diversity, equity, and inclusion, Director in Burlington Schools, got an update on the timeline this week. Superintendent Eric Conti said now that the district is finishing up analyzing the equity report, they're drafting a job description and hope to post it online before the February break. The position has been funded in the budget, but has been vacant since the departure of Raymond Porch, who lasted less than a year in 2022. But Dr. Conti says the work of DEI has continued without a single person responsible for it. Here he is.
I oftentimes, again, understand the urgency that many different people feel. And sometimes, what gets conveyed is we're not doing DEI work without a DEI labeled or articulated position. And I just don't subscribe to that. I think we are all doing equity work all the time, and that's really how it should be done. We can't rely on one person to do the equity work for us. I think that voice is incredibly important. I don't want to minimize it. But it's really the work of all of us to move equity work forward.
The names for those who are running for reelection in Burlington are pouring in, and we are looking at contested races for open select board seat and a contested school committee seat. Seats, excuse me. They're also a race that looks contested, but it might not be as simple as it appears. On paper, Stacey Huberty is challenging incumbent Shawshin School Committee member Christine Kim, but in reality, they're not in competition at all. In an interview with B News this week, Kim said she's proud of the work she's done. But now that she doesn't have kids at Shawshin anymore, she wanted to make room for another leader. She posted as much online, and Huberty, mom of a Shawshin freshman, stepped forward. Kim says she's continuing with the process of filing papers in case something happens with Huberty's campaign. But if Huberty gets enough signatures, she'll withdraw and hand over the reins. Stay tuned to B News for more news about the April's local election. More than three months into the latest conflict between Israel and Hamas, Burlington's interfaith leaders have released a letter calling for peace here at home. The letter says the Jewish community continues to suffer in the aftermath of Hamas's attack amid displacement, the death of soldiers, and hostages still in captivity. And the community mourns for over 25,000 Palestinians killed, reported by Hamas, in attacks on Gaza, and still others who have lost loved ones, lost their homes, and lost basic necessities. The letter went on to quote, "It's important, while things are escalating overseas, that we do not become divisive and divided in our own town. We continue to experience a sharp rise in Islamophobia and antisemitism. We want to spread the word that even though our two communities are embroiled in a horrible conflict in the Middle East, we here desperately need to model peace and friendship as our toothpaste command," end quote. The letter was signed by Imam Shaqil Rahman of the Islamic Center of Burlington, Rabbi Susan Abramson of Temple Shalom Emeth in Burlington, and the Temple Shalom Emeth Board. Burlington's municipal buildings have gotten an upgrade recently thanks to state grants. Burlington became a designated green community in 2020, and has been using that program's grants to install environmentally friendly and cost-saving upgrades to town buildings ever since. This time, the DPW used more than $127,000 to upgrade weatherization at Town Hall and the Town Hall annex. Both buildings were stripped of their insulation and had new insulation blown in to make sure no unwanted air escaped. The efforts have helped the town to reach its goal of a 20% reduction in energy usage by the end of 2025. Before this project, the town had achieved a 13.6% reduction. The artists in Burlington High School's Theory and Fine Arts Departments are both preparing for big events. The actors in the Drama Department are rehearsing for The Dining Room, which they will perform on February 2 and February 3 in the Fogelberg Auditorium. It's a versatile play that can also be condensed into a one-act show, which is to be entered into the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild One Act Festival in March. Plus photographers, painters, and mixed media artists are prepared to exhibit their work at Lex Arts Annual High School Art Show. BHS students will be displayed from March 2 to March 17 at the Lexington Gallery. A reception will be held on Sunday, March 3, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Congratulations and break a leg to all artists and performers. Local cousins Liam Cronin and James Anderson have qualified to run the Boston Marathon as a duo team, following in the tradition of their beloved father-son pair Dick and Rick Hoyt. Along with family friends and fellow charity runner, family friend and fellow charity runner Derek DeAntonis, they're raising money to support programs for adults with disabilities, including here in Burlington. Sydney Bowles has the story.
Dick and Rick Hoyt completed the Boston Marathon 32 times. Rick, who had cerebral palsy in his chair, and Dick, his father, running. This April, two new athletes will be joining the Hoyts' legacy. James, do you enjoy running the races?
Yeah. You like running them? Yep. He's always pumping up the crowd.
James has a condition called NARS-1, a rare genetic disorder that was only formally discovered in the last few years.
So James is currently the oldest diagnosed patient, and there's only a handful in the U.S., only one other with his exact mutation in the United States.
James started running with his mom Nancy, who has now passed the baton to her nephew.
A few years back, I had never even been able to run even a few miles. But I just got out there and started. I saw my Aunt Nancy run a marathon with James. So she was kind of pushing me towards that direction. She got me to run the seven-mile Falmouth Road Race with him, and then convinced me to go down to Nashville and wanted me to run a half marathon down there with him because James's sister lives down there. And ever since then, I've enjoyed running. And really, Boston was the ultimate goal.
Through their run, James and Liam are raising money for adults with disabilities. A fundraiser this January raised over $10,000. They want some of that money to go to Burlington.
So we met with Burlington Recreation before our fundraising event this weekend. And they presented some great ideas of things they're looking to do, but they don't have the funding. So two of those are an I can swim and I can bike program. And the philosophy is that anyone can swim and bike, and these are very important life skills. But many with intellectual disabilities don't get an opportunity to learn those skills. So we are really hoping that we can raise enough to fund at least one of those programs this year.
But most of all, the Andersons say the marathons are special for James.
He will say at the end of every race, medal, I did it. I mean, it's, he earned it. And he takes full credit, and I'm glad he does because he did earn it.
For B News Weekly, I'm Sydney Bowles.
Good luck, Derek and James. For those of you who are investing in your fitness this year, the Rec Department has some programs for you. Tad Stefanak has more.
Inhale, lifting up your right knee.
Bar yoga with the Parks and Recreation Department can help you lose weight, gain muscle, and improve cardio health in 2024.
So let's begin with our hands facing forward.
So we want to do something completely different this year and get people focused on their resolutions and stick to it. Because so many times, people set up their goals, and then they don't have the tools to actually achieve those goals. So we are offering a three-class workshop, one's focusing on one of our popular classes. It's a bar and yoga combo.
The bar class meets on Wednesday nights from 6 to 7, and also meets Saturday mornings, 10:15 to 11:15. Quite a bit of core work, balance, leg work, squatting. It's a pretty fast-paced, intense class. All levels are welcome, quite a bit of modifications, and a lot of fun. There's a great group of people in the class, and you just leave here so spirited, light, and feeling strong.
Begin to inhale, your hands long overhead.
It's a very strong leg workout as well as core. The core strength definitely will be stronger, posture, alignment, knowing when your core strength is stronger, your lower back will feel stronger, your quads will be stronger. So we focus a lot on core as well as balance. And that's all part of core strength, your balance. Coming to the Recreation Department, it's a great group of people. It's a community as well. And everyone is so friendly. I just, I've been here 12 years at the Recreation Department, and it's the best experience I've ever had. Come join us and feel strong. We're inspirational. We're spirited. We have so much energy, and I'd love to give my energy to each and every one of you. So come join in.
From the Burlington Parks and Recreation Department, I'm B News reporter Tad Stefanak.
Come join bars.
Today, as we are taping on Friday, is the Jewish holiday, Tubishvat, a celebration of agriculture and of trees. There's a special seder at Temple Shalom Emeth to celebrate it. Rabbi Susan Abramson explained a bit more about the holiday.
We're about to celebrate Tubishvat, which is the Hebrew word for the 15th day of the Hebrew month of Shvat. And it's the time when the almond trees in Israel start to bloom, and water comes into the roots. And there was a time when the Israelites tised everybody with it for their trees and got taxes from them. And so there are different levels. And so it's an agricultural holiday, reminding us of the state of Israel and the trees blossoming there, even though it's winter here. And the second level is that the mystics in their Jewish faith in the Middle Ages created a whole Tubishvat seder, very similar to a Passover seder. And so we had different types of fruit that we eat during it, a fruit that you could eat all of, a fruit that has a pit in the middle, and a fruit that has an outer shell, to remind us of different human attributes, how we sometimes put a shell between ourselves and other people, how sometimes we harden our hearts like a pit against other people, and the fullness or the ideal is to be able to show our full selves or our whole selves to the world.
Every now and then, we like to introduce you to different parts of town government through the people who make them work. One employee in the school system got a special shout-out recently, so Sydney Bowles went to speak with him. Here she is.
In our quest to bring you the stories of Burlington employees you might not hear from all that often, we're going to Marshall Simons Middle School, where custodian Barry Beldnap is winning hearts, minds, and stomachs.
Do a little bit of everything. We sweep floors, clean glass, clean bathrooms, things like that.
Barry's favorite part of the job is interacting with the students.
Every day during lunch, not every day during lunch, but some days during lunch, I get to play chess with them. So I'll have a game, and we'll play that. So that's always enjoyable. And I get to hear them laugh and tell each other jokes and stuff like that.
But it's during the holidays when Barry truly shines. This year, he was featured on the Marshall Simons Instagram page for his incredible artwork.
It's nice to do something for somebody and just make people smile, yeah.
He's also known for his holiday cookies, all 600 of them.
I do snowball cookies, which are like chocolate chip cookies rolled in confectionery sugar. And then I do Italian cookies as well.
From chess to sculpture to baked goods, now you know who works for Burlington.
Let's turn it over now to Anthony Matos for the latest in Red Devil sports.
Hey, everyone. I'm Anthony Matos. This is Weekly Sports Report. BHS once again had another big week of athletes. Burlington's running back and linebacker Joey Polan has been named to the Boston Arrow's Division Four Massachusetts All-State Team, with the paper recognizing Poland's tremendous senior year for the Red Devils. According to The Herald, Polan rushed for 1,594 yards, 20 touchdowns on 192 carries, and 21 catches for 234 yards. Defensively, he made 135 tackles and four sacks on defense. Congrats, Joey. Girls volleyball players junior and outside hitter Grace Seaman, Ulla Rinconvucha, and Karina Boyejev all made Herald's All-Scholastic and League All-Stars as well. Congrats, ladies. B News Sports reporter Robert Paris had more on football athlete Charlie Andriolo, who now knows his future after high school.
2023 senior football captain and lineman Charlie Andriolo will be going to Endicott College, as he will be continuing his career on the playing field for football.
Once I heard about Endicott, I heard nothing but good things. One of my coaches went there, and he said he loved it. So I looked around the campus, loved the place, great business program, which is what I want to do, and obviously, amazing football program. And they really have a strong brotherhood there, is what I was looking for in a team. So that made my decision pretty easy.
He has learned a lot from all of his coaches, including head coach of Red Devil Football, George Balian.
He really just made me grow as a person. He kind of maybe developed me into who I am. And then obviously, as a line, he's a defensive genius. He got me moving laterally, and really helped me use my speed to my advantage, which I think helped me, which is going to help me in the next level. And then obviously, in the weight room in the summer, teaching me everything I know and making me the kid I am today.
As he wraps things up as a Red Devil, Charlie will reminisce everything here at BHS. But he said, "All good things must come to an end."
Senior year of sports, always fun. Sad to see him go, football, the best season I've ever played out of every single sport. And it sucked to see it go. But now I'm starting hockey again, and we'll be going to Senior Night for that. And I've played hockey since I was six or seven, so it's going to tough to see that go. Same thing when lacrosse comes by, you know. But it's good. It's good to, all good things come to an end. And I think this is, this is going to be the season, the year to end all years, as I'd say, you know, and go off on a high note.
Andriolo is excited to see what the future holds for him as an Endicott Gull.
I'm looking for the new experience. I mean, I've been living a day-to-day routine every single day for the past four years. And this is something out of the ordinary, meeting a bunch of new people, have 100 new friends off the bat on a football team, and obviously, just continuing to play football. And that's what I wanted to do since day one. And now that I've, now that I got the opportunity to, I'm excited, super excited.
For Burlington High School, I'm Robert Paris for B News Sports.
Boys Swimming are 0-6 this season after two losses to Winchester on the 18th, 85 to 76, and Lexington 74 to 20 on January 21st. The Devils have their final meet on January 25th in Arlington. After 137.2 to 124.3 win over Wakefield on the 18th, the Lady Devils Gymnastics is now 4-0. Burlington will be in Wilmington next Monday, the 29th. The boys track team came in second place out of 22 at the Division III Massachusetts State Track Coaches Association Relay Championship on January 21st. Ryan Brooks, Sean Cox, Dylan Giles, and Colin Irwin all qualified for a spot in the New Balance Nationals in March during their performances in the spring meter relay. As for the girls track team, the Devils came in 10th out of 22nd in the MSTCA Relay Championship on January 21st. The top finisher was Charlize Collins, who came in third place in the long jump relay with 5.09 meters. For both teams, the JV championship meet will take place on January 25 at the track at New Balance in Boston. Girls basketball lost to the Wilmington Wildcats on the 19th, 48 to 32. The boys competed against them as well. We go to the highlights.
It's going to be a good one. Red Devil basketball returned home for a league matchup with the Wilmington Wildcats. In the first quarter, Burlington put up 24 points, while the Wildcats had 18. 24 to 18 after one. The Devils brought their lead up a bit by adding another 17 points in the second, and Wilmington had 12. 41 to 30, Devils at half. Third quarter, back from halftime. Burlington added another 13 points, while the Wildcats had 17. It was getting close going into the fourth, 54 to 47. Burlington had the fourth quarter under control by adding another 17 points, while the Wildcats with seven. Burlington took home the big victory, 71 to 54.
BHS Athletic Director Sean Hart presented senior Cedric Rodriguez with a basketball recognizing his 1,000th point before tip-off with the Wildcats. Congratulations, Cedric, and good luck the rest of the way. The girls remained home for a date with Winchester on the 23rd. We go to the highlights.
Girls varsity basketball took on Winchester High School on the evening of January 23rd. Let's hit the court. In the first quarter, Burlington put up 11 points, while Winchester had 16. For the half, the Devils added four points, while Winchester added 16 more. 32 to 15 going into halftime, Winchester. Burlington only added three points on the board in the third, while Winchester added nine, 41 to 18. In the fourth, Winchester finished it off with another 14 points, while the Devils had seven. 55 to 25 was the final, Winchester.
The boys won their game 59 to 21 at Winchester. Both teams will host the Stone of Spartans on January 26 at the Vanellope Gym. The ladies are now 1 and 11, while the boys are 8 and 5. Lady Devils hockey are on fire this season with an 8-1 record. They had two shutout wins over Wakefield, 6-0 on the 13th, and a 2-0 win over Malden Catholic on the 17th. Lady Devils hockey are now 9-1-1 after a 1-0 win over Hingham on the 20th. Both had their first tie of the season in Belmont, 2-2. Red Devil hockey are 6-5-2 after tying Wilmington 2-2 on the 20th, but got back in the win column with a 2-1 win in Belmont on the 24th. O'Brien Ice Ridge will be the next stop for both teams on Saturday in the Battle of Win Street. Red Devil Wrestling lost to Wakefield Memorial 60 to 6 on January 24th. Their record stands at 1 and 12 this season. Keef Tactical will be the next meet on January 31 at BHS. For more Red Devil action, go to BcatTV.org/sports, and check out our Twitter page at BNewsSports. That's all for now. I'm Anthony Matos. Back to you guys in the studio.
Now, let's turn to Peter Brown for the weather, and stay tuned after that for your Community Calendar with Gretchen Carey.
Well, over, well, over, ladies. This is Peter Brown, Field Marshal Weather for the next seven days. Here we are heading in towards the end of January, the start of February. That is the last month of meteorological winter. So there is a little bit of a light at the end of the tunnel for those of us who just dread the winter weather. But we still have quite a bit of that cold weather to come. So don't look up too quickly here. Looks like we still have quite a bit of winter weather to go through. Now, as we started our period on Friday, we should be seeing temperatures at this time of the year in the mid-30s. Going to be a good 10, maybe, degrees warmer than that. Temperatures in the upper 40s, around 50. So not too bad out there. And as we round out our period, getting in towards next Thursday on February 1, again, our average highs should be in the mid-30s. And yes, you did notice that our average highs have ticked up a degree by the end of next week. That is a sign that we are now on the other side of the hill, and our average highs will keep getting higher and higher until we get to about the middle of July. Looking at our temperature map, they're looking at us having a chance of above-average temperatures. I think that's going to be pretty much par for the course for the first couple of days of our period, starting out the weekend. But thereafter, looks like it's going to get pretty chilly out there as we start out the work week. Now, looking at our precipitation chances, they're calling for us to have below-average precipitation. Not too sure about that, as we're going to have a rainy and kind of messy go of it here again, starting out our period, especially over the weekend. Unfortunately, going to be kind of messy out there. But as we get in towards the middle of next work week, it looks like that will clear out, and we'll probably get back to drier conditions. We'll just have to see if that pans out, just to see how wet it really gets here in the Burlington area. So as we go ahead, let's take a look at those seven days of weather coming up. And again, on Friday, we're starting our period with some rain, starting out your weekend out there. Temperatures, though, in the upper 40s to around 50, so pretty pleasant out there. Saturday, we're just going to see pretty cloudy, gray conditions out there. You know, not too cold. Temperatures in the low to mid 40s, but still just not the nicest of days, just very gray, cloudy, damp out there. And then as we get into Sunday, we're going to see that chance of rain move back into the picture, and pretty chilly out there. Temperatures hanging around 40. And as we get in towards Sunday night and into Monday morning, we might be seeing some light snow mixing in with the rain. So again, probably going to have to have that ice melt and everything out on the driveways. Looks like it's going to be another icy mess of a go of yours as we go into Monday morning. Those temperatures then Monday mornings who head off to work are going to plunge down into the low 30s for highs, so very chilly out there. It's pretty chilly going into the rest of the work week. Temperatures struggling to get out of the 20s on Tuesday, but the sun is going to be coming out there. And hopefully, by the time we get to the end of the period in towards Thursday, it looks like our temperatures will be back up to near normal. So everyone, get out there, enjoy the weather, and have a great week.
Hi, I'm Amy Poehler, and you're watching Bcat. Go Red Devils!
Hey, everyone. I'm Gretchen Carey, and this is your Community Calendar.
On February 1st, from 4 to 4:45 p.m., the Burlington Public Library will be happy- On February 1st, from 4 to 4:45 p.m., the Burlington Public Library will be having a Valentine's Day card-making for children and caregivers. To register, go to the library website. On February 9th, from 6 to 9 p.m., Parks and Recreation Department will be having a special someone soiree at the Hilton Boston Woburn on 2 Forbes Road. For more information and to register, go to their website. On February 10th, from 8 a.m. to 11 a.m., the Burlington Community Scholarship Foundation will be having a character breakfast at Tony C's. All proceeds benefit the Adopt a Class 2031 Scholarship Fund. To register, go to the following website.
For more Community Calendar events, go to BcatTV.org, BurlingtonPublicLibrary.org, and BurlingtonRecreation.org. I'm Gretchen Carey, and that was your Community Calendar.
And as we do every week, we're bringing you a photo from a member of the community. Mary Leach sent in this photo of a wintry scene at Leahy. She says she's already dreaming of spring. Aren't we all? Thank you, Mary. We'd love to feature your photos here and share them with the community. Email them to us at Bcat@BcatTV.org with the subject line, "The Photo of the Week." And that's our program. Thank you for tuning in. I'm your host, Phil Gallagher. See you again next week.